All right, I would like to call to order our February 28th, 2023 meeting of the Columbia Heights Board of Education. If you're able, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do not fall.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Just go back. Fall in there.
Foot.
It popped up.
Mary, will you call the roll, please?
I would love to.
Now that you're settled.
Palmer?
Here.
Hool?
Here.
Petway?
Here.
Maderas?
Here.
Granland?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Superintendent Stenvik?
Here.
Thank you. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Very exciting for us tonight. We get to start our meeting with our Highlander highlights. And so the board will honor Mr. Ted. Our North Park School for Innovation teacher has been named the General Mills Teacher of the Month for February 2023. And I believe, Mr. Sostic, are you coming up?
Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenvik, members of the board, good evening. It is an honor to speak about the man next to me. You know, a lot of times you'll see folks get awards and say, oh, well, you know, that person's probably pretty good. This, Keon Lewis had the best description of Mr. Ted, who is, Mr. Keon is now his colleague, said Ted lives it. And this is the best description I can think of. Ted puts his heart and his soul into everything that he does. I believe there's a former parent of Mr. Ted's class on the board, two years in a row. You know, Ted goes the extra mile to create amazing relationships with parents. At seven o'clock, this meeting probably disrupted his workday, is pretty much how he rolls because he stays after it because that's when you get a hold of parents. And he creates relationships that, I mean, they stay with the kids forever. And one of the most remarkable things about Ted is every year he has at least one student that's struggling, or two, or three. And the amount of time that he puts into it, and it's his own time. This year, he has a student who has struggled since they've been at North Park and is now in second grade. And Ted takes 10 to 15 minutes of his prep time every day. He goes and picks this child up early from whatever specialist they had to walk, to walk and talk, and to create a relationship, and to counsel. And he has done more for this child, to get this child regulated and learning than anyone else has done in three years. And that's exactly, that's what we expect from Mr. Ted now because that's just what he does every single year. So I cannot think of a person that is more deserving of any honor that comes his way. And I would be proud to have my own child in his class, although my youngest is 22, so that'd be kind of awkward. So I just, I give to you, Mr. Ted.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to say thank you. Thank you for this honor. Thank you for recognizing the work that we're doing at North Park. And as an educator, this is a validation of all the work that we're doing and the impact we're having on the students every time we step into the classroom. And as for me, this is like motivation for me to continue doing what I've been doing, to keep doing my part from supporting, helping, and guiding the students to become future leaders in our society. So, thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Ted. I'll give the board just a quick second, or in a second, give you a chance to comment as well. But I want to reiterate, this is the General Mills Teacher of the Month. This isn't like the General Mills Columbia Heights Teacher of the Month, or Minnesota Teacher of the Month. This is General Mills Teacher of the Month. So it's really an excellent and very well-deserved recognition, so congratulations. Does anybody on the board wish to say anything? Julie?
I just want to mention that I just heard Viola Davis speak about her childhood and that one person in her life that changed her world. And it sounds like, Mr. Ted, that you are that person to most of these children, and I thank you so much for doing what you do.
Thank you.
Well, I of course have something to say. It is very true what you just said, and you are a household name in at least one house. You are often spoken of and referenced to, and you have just changed my daughter's life. And I mean it in the, oh, sorry. She's grown so much, and I I think that she needed you, and I thank you so much. Because she is, she's not always able to express herself the way that she wants to, and she has trouble with friends sometimes and finding her place. And by her being able to be with you in those moments of, you know, heights from home and then in the classroom and so many transitions, her kindergarten year got cut short. We had just moved here, there was just so much happening. She needed someone who was going to help her, and you gave her so much of you, not just an education. So thank you so much.
You know, I have, my children didn't go to North Park, but I have heard so much about all of the wonderful things you've been doing for years, from staff, from people in the community. And I just, it's, I'm so grateful that you are also getting recognized nationally for the amazing work that you're doing with our students and the, not only just like the stuff that you're doing in the classroom, but also being a leader and, and, you know, helping out your colleagues and showing them like all these things that you can do and how to be engaged and how to help them. And it's just, I think words are completely insufficient to even just try to say how much you have done for so many people over the years. So I thank you so much for everything you do, and I'm really glad that this is coming from not just us, so.
I also just want to add my congratulations and let you know, too, that I actually learned about your recognition not through the board agenda, but because I was submitting receipts through the Box Top program last week. And as soon as I submitted my receipt, it took me straight to your profile page, and I almost fell off my couch. Just know that, too, that the work that you're doing, the ways you're supporting all of our kids and talking about everything that you're doing at North Park, anyone who's participating in that program around the country, they're seeing that and they're learning that and hearing about everything you're doing to support Heights. So congratulations again.
And I would like to say congratulations as well. It's amazing how a single individual can make such an impact, that you're no longer our little secret, you know? So, you know, just, I just keep doing what you're doing, and we are so incredibly grateful for the contribution made for our kids.
We do have one more piece of recognition for you. I have a certificate, so if you'd like to come up. And then, board, if you would like to come line up for handshaking. And let's give a round of applause for Mr. Ted. And as we usually say, Mr. Ted, as much as you are very welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, you've had a very long day, and you do not need to stay. All right, next we will move on to our agenda approval adjustments and announcements. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Jessica. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Our announcements for this evening, on March 14th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, we have a regular school board meeting here in the community room. On March 20th, Monday, there is no school. March 21st, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there is a school board work session here in the community room. And March 28th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, there is a regular school board meeting here in the community room. I'd also like to add, on Tuesday, March 7th, at 6:00 PM, here in the community room, we have our school board and city council joint meeting. Next, we'll move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenvik, is there any correspondence?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our communication to the board. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request the administration to follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time, and our speakers are limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak to the board? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on. Next is our consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the personnel report, lane changes, teacher ECFE, teacher seniority lists, the seniority list approval. I think that is it. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. And a motion by Mary, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we will move on to the acknowledgements of contributions. This is a resolution, so I will read this and then ask for a motion in a second to move that forward. "Our acknowledgement of contributions resolution, whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools, Independent School District Number 13, that the board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $3,295.47." In our monetary contributions, the following donations were made to the Columbia Heights Public Schools' Reduced Student Food Service Debt Fund by Emmeline Childs for $2,000. Value and Kind, donation of clothing was made to Valley View Elementary by Kelly and Chris Jones for student needs, estimated value $200. Donation of winter outerwear was made to Valley View Elementary by Rosalinda Castro for family and student needs, estimated value of $153. A donation of gift card was made to Valley View Elementary by Donors Choose for Ms. Scott's Class, estimated value $100. Donation of headphones and flashlights was made to Valley View Elementary by Donors Choose for Leap Classroom, estimated of $454.47. Donation of outerwear was made to Valley View Elementary by Andrea Beath for student needs, estimated value of $306. Donation of winter outerwear was made to Valley View Elementary by Maureen Riley for student needs, estimated value of $82. And a donation of books was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools Elementary Schools by Ashray Minnesota Chapter for School Libraries, estimated value $40.50. The total fiscal year 2022-2023 monetary contributions to date, $72,954.36. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura, in a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any discussion?
I mean, per usual, like, again, we're so grateful to have a community that supports our students and staff and all of the things that we're doing in those ways. So especially when we're looking at all the deficits that we have, it's very, it's helpful and so appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, we'll proceed to vote. Mary, this is a resolution. Will you call the roll, please?
Yep. Palmer?
Aye.
Hool?
Aye.
Petway?
Aye.
Maderas?
Aye.
Granland?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye. Motion carries, or resolution passes, excuse me. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to our discussion reports, information items, and we'll start with reports from members of the board. And we will start with Michelle tonight, report for us.
So I didn't have a whole lot going on. I did, I did go with Arian Kokish to the Urban League this past week to go for a meeting for equity. And we, it was really for the Families of Color Affinity Group in North Park. But I did find some things that were very interesting for the board, and I think that next time they have it, it would be a great opportunity for us to probably go and see if we can find some solutions or answers to some questions we may have, too. So it kind of turned into like a board Families of Color Affinity Group type thing, too, because I could be represented as either a parent, a leader, or a board member. So my board member role kind of took lead over that parent role while I was there, and I was able to give more insight as a board member over that parent role. So that was kind of the main thing that I was contributing to while I was away. And we just did the, we just did a tour of the high school here, which was awesome because I had never been through there, past the theater for the plays, so that was nice, and through the Family Center. So that was nice, too.
Thank you.
That's all I have for now.
Julie?
I participated in our training last week, which I thought was great for team building, and I thought it was a really good opportunity to get to know some of the other board members. I also contacted the city of Fridley as the liaison, and just an email at this point, but I will be attending the May, March 14th meeting and introducing myself. And I would appreciate maybe some talking points that we can maybe throw on the agenda because I'm going to take a little time to introduce myself and kind of how we represent Fridley as well.
Laura?
I would suggest bragging of Mr. Ted.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Ted.
Mr. Ted.
That's right in Fridley.
For sure.
So that's lovely. And Michelle, you also attended our training.
I did.
Yes, yeah, I know, it's hard being put on the spot the first time around, isn't it?
Well, you can't like go, yeah, I was there.
Yeah, I forgot about that. Yeah, well, yeah, we did do this team building last week, which was absolutely amazing, and it was really great to see just how much in agreement we are with how incredibly awesome this community is and different opportunities. And I look forward to working with this board. And then, thank you, Julie. We had a lovely conversation, which lasted probably about an hour longer than it's supposed to have because I can't shut up when I'm tired, you know? So I thank you for your time. Also had the lovely opportunity to tour all of the great improvements that have been made over at the high school. It's really exciting to see a lot of things, well, let's just say, in this century, you know, updated, which was wonderful. But I guess the phone booths are still really super cute, so we're going to keep those. But just the cleaning up and the new gym floor and the PAC, and thank you, community, for making that happen. We couldn't do it without your support. And in addition to that, I also attended the chair meeting prior to this, oh, the Family Center. There's some great things that are happening here at the Family Center, especially for early childhood. And, you know, come on out and, you know, participate in the parent programs, and, you know, again, it's another great community asset.
Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Jessica?
Sure. So since the last meeting, I attended a tour of Metro Heights that was provided by the staff at Metro Heights and the District 916 Board. That was a really great opportunity to see that school from the perspective of a student who actually gave us the tour, which was great. And also to be able to learn more about the 916 District, meet the board members and their superintendent. So I was very appreciative of that opportunity, and I would definitely recommend to other board members that they take advantage of those tours as they can, because I believe they do a series of tours in the spring and then another series in the fall. So that was really great. I also participated in Minnesota School Board Association webinar on employee and student free speech issues that I thought was really interesting, gave a lot of background on newer case law that's influencing conversations that are happening here in Minnesota and nationally. And then I also attended, like all of you, the school board retreat last week, so thank you to everyone who helped put that together. I attended, Highland had a family fun night last week that I attended, and that was a really good opportunity to talk with families over there. I attended the Columbia Academy Musical over the weekend, Lion King Jr., and they did a fabulous job. It was so much fun. I'm bummed that they only got to perform twice because of the weather cancellation, but I think the community more than made up for it in attending the Saturday and Sunday shows, so we had a lot of fun with that. And then, like all of you, I also attended the tour of the high school and the Family Center right before this meeting. So thank you to the principal and assistant principal at the high school, as well as Kristin Stunkel for giving us those tours, to learn about those programs and all of the great facilities that Member Palmer mentioned at the high school. And then lastly, I've had several conversations with community members and staff since our last meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Mary?
Okay. Last week, like everybody has said, work session in the team building, and then the tour of the high school right before this, so echoing everything that has already been said about that. Several conversations with Superintendent Stenvik, various conversations with staff, students, and families, especially related to our literacy goals, but not exclusively to that. I have had some conversations with council member and school liaison, Justice Briggs, and Senator Mary Kunesh about educational funding. And then I also attended the CA Musical on Saturday of Lion King Jr., and again, it was amazing. Mr. Burkus, today, when we were chatting about it, he said that during one of the practices, he thought that what he heard was actually the recording, but it was not. It was our students. So, you know, he said it was hands down one of the best middle school plays he's ever seen with the quality and caliber of our students. And then he said, and I've been doing this for a while, I've seen a lot of them. So I mean, like, I'm really, I'm sorry that, I know you wanted to be there, Michelle, and we've talked about that, too. But it was truly just another wonderful way that I think our hearts are in the arts, and it really shows, so. And I think that's more than enough.
Excellent, thank you. For my report, last week I attended the chair meeting prior to our work session slash board retreat, which you have all talked about. I was also here for part of the high school and then the Family Center tour this evening, the chair meeting just prior to this. And then I also had the opportunity to attend our hockey team's game. You know, if you all know that, we co-op on a hockey team with St. Anthony and Irondale. And we had one Heights student who plays on the hockey team, and it was senior night. So there was about maybe 20-plus of us from Heights that came to cheer on Matt Rockwell and his senior night game. And that was a lot of fun, so it was a really great experience to see that and support him and cheer. I also had a conversation with Dawn Hoyam, which we kind of rolled over in the personnel report, as she talked with me about her upcoming retirement. And I'm not going to let this go, Dawn, without mentioning at the meeting that we, I'm very happy for you and the next adventure that you have. Very sad for me and for the rest of us. Got some big shoes to fill, but we are very excited for you. So thank you for your many, many years of service and support, and we'll be talking to you throughout the rest of the year until your retirement this summer. There might be some tear shed later on, so, thank you. And then I also had conversations with Superintendent Stenvik. Superintendent Stenvik, do you have a report for us?
I do. Brief report. I have been joining Director Henneken's for multiple presentations on our district finances. This is something we do annually in order to be transparent with our finances. We are presenting to school staff and our various committees, and the presentation will soon be made online as well, or made available online. I also met with city manager Kelly Bourgeois, and we're both really looking forward to the upcoming joint city council and school board meeting. Executive Director Niambue, along with our cultural liaison, Louine Savvedra, and I had a great meeting today with the Ecuadorian consulate. With our influx of Ecuadorian families into our community, we really wanted to connect and discuss the possibility of available resources. Excellent meeting, more to come on that partnership. And I had conversations with Chair Mueller, Member Granland, met with Member Hool, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the American Indian Education Parent Committee Concurrent. We'll start with Superintendent Stenvik.
So this evening, I'm here with the chair of our American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, Laura Newton, and I'll pass it over to Laura in just a few moments. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And tonight, we're focusing on the core values of community and respect, and of course, all of our core values are aligned to our school board equity statement. In terms of governance, this is going to be informational for the school board because the governance for our American Indian resolution of concurrents is really housed within the parent committee itself. So they are the governing board for this resolution. And so the parent committee met on February 1st to review all of the components and the requirements of the resolution and voted that day, and so now we're here today providing information to the school board. And this is all part of Minnesota State Statute 124D.78 around the requirements of having American Indian Parent Committee work. So I will, with that, I'll introduce Laura Newton and pass it over to you.
Bonjour, everyone. My name is Laura Newton, and I am the Chair of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. We're really lucky, I think, in Heights that we have an active parent advisory committee, lots of folks involved. And so today, I'm just here to present the fact that we did meet last, on February 1st. We reviewed the most recent data. We looked at the programming that we've had in the last year, and one of the things that we do is we make recommendations to the district and the school board, and then we vote every year on concurrents. So we did have a vote of concurrents. I don't, I think there's another slide here, too. And, yeah, things are going really well. I know we're excited. There's some great pictures on here. The main thing that we need to do every six months, I think it is, that we come on and we talk about the vote of concurrents, and then we come on yearly and we review our goals and everything for the state. But on a more month-to-month basis, we're looking at activities for our families. And so these are some great, like, clips of some of the things that have been done in the past. We are hopefully getting ready, I just spoke to Val Larson today. Hopefully, it's going to warm up a little bit, and we're going to go to Sugar Bush in the next few weeks. We would have already been there, but then we got a blizzard, so. That didn't happen, the weather didn't cooperate with us. So hopefully, the SAP will be running, and we'll get to bring a whole group of students out there. And I think, you know, I'm pretty sure that, you know, that's something like if board members wanted to jump on board and come on sometime- and come on sometime, they could come see what that's all about.
It's definitely a working field trip. We tap the trees.
You don't want to bring your boots and all that kind of stuff. But if you ever wanted to check it out, I'm sure that families would be happy to have other people along. And they do put you to work there, though. So they will make you do stuff.
I hauled logs.
Chop wood, or bake food, or whatever. It is a working camp, the folks, you know, some folks stay out there all the time. It's really, it's an awesome thing that we have and tradition that we have in the metro area here. I'm Ojibwe myself, and it's something that, you know, we had up northern Minnesota. But we're just really blessed that there's been this longstanding educational kind of Sugar Bush camp that is open to like really a lot of different organizations and schools and all kinds of stuff. So it's really cool. So that's coming up. And then the other thing that we're doing in March and April is we're really lucky. We have someone on our advisory right now who is very gifted at sewing. And so we're doing some sewing workshops. A lot of, there's a lot of seniors going to graduate this year. There's, you know, some older students who have been interested in updating or redoing or making new regalia for upcoming powwow season. And so they're going to do that, as well as I think make some ribbon shirts. So that's really cool, because we haven't really got to do that for a while. So I think that's going to be really fun and hopefully well-attended. And I think that's about all I have. But yeah, just, I think we're excited that we, this is the resolution of concurrents that just says that we, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, did have a vote of concurrents. We agree with the contents and implementation of the Indian Education Program Plan. And we commit to evaluating the I E P P at the end of the school year to ensure that it's continuing to meet the needs of the American Indian students. And other than that, I would just say that we're very, very blessed in Columbia Heights to have Val Larson with us. I personally have known Val for a really long time and I know that she may be retiring soon. But we've just been blessed to have her here in the small district because she, she just, she could be a lot of places, but she's chosen to be here, which is really awesome. So, so yeah, luckily, we've been able to build a lot of things, I think, in the last few years.
We've really been blessed with the parent committee in general. Just, just for context, the parent committee really only needs to meet a few times a year. Ours chooses to meet every single month. It's very active. So really appreciative of the work that they do. They'll be reviewing some of our curriculum coming up here. So that's part of our goals this year is to start going through, looking at curriculum and American Indian topics within our curriculum. And so we're able to seek that advice from the committee. Thanks.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your leadership as well. Hold on one second. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, thank you.
I have questions. I am so, I'm so glad that you are in that role, Laura. You are also quite amazing. And I mean, that's a very high standard. And also, like, I think it would be remiss to not also say how lucky we are to have you in that role.
That's nice, thank you.
And I have heard so many good things about all of the activities. And I've been to powwows and it's amazing. And I would absolutely love to join you for the Sugar Bush thing. So can you let us know when that is, when it gets scheduled?
Well, it depends on the SAP and when the SAP runs.
But hopefully soon, hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
So thank you for the invite and also thank you for everything you do. We so appreciate you. And the rest of the parents on the Heights are ready.
I'm sorry. How many Native American students do we have here at Columbia Heights?
I don't know the big number, but I bet Zina does off the top of my head.
Unfortunately, there are multiple ways to calculate whether we're looking at federal or state. And so for our federal, which requires a tribal affiliation and a form, we were able to collect, Val Larson was able to collect 38 forms, which before she was in our district, it was maybe 10 or 12. So she really has made connections with the community. And then there's anywhere, it kind of ranges depending on how parents enroll and what they mark down on the enrollment form, really. So anywhere between 70 and 100.
Thank you.
I mean, one of the things that's great, like with the state, I believe it is, is that, you know, the federal definition, state definition for like recognizing folks is a little bit different. And so there's lots of people here that are linearly connected to tribes, or, you know, through parents or grandparents that might not actually be enrolled, but identify as being American Indian. And so those families are always included. And it's just that for the, I think, the actual formation of the parent advisory, you have to have 10 students within your district. So it's a, it's a small number, but it's important because, I mean, I think we all have seen unfortunately that there's a really, really high disparity with American Indian student graduates. So I just think it's so great. Not here, though. It has not been that here.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. But I mean, across the board in the state, the American Indian graduation rate has been pretty low. So, you know, that's one of the things, luckily, Minnesota really has taken a lot of good effort to make sure that even if there's a small population of American Indian students, that they get more supportive services. So hopefully, they make it to the point of graduation.
Jessica, you have a question?
I just wanted to thank you, Laura, for your continued leadership in bringing families together. And then I also just had a question. I know the accolades around Val Larson have come up a couple of times in this conversation. And for those of us who are new members, may not have had the opportunity to be introduced to her. I'm just wondering if someone, maybe Zina, if you want to just speak to her role in the district.
So Val sends her regrets for not being able to be here tonight. She's actually, she's the chair of a tribal affiliated organization that-
It's the urban, the urban Leech Lake, kind of like their council. So she's the chair of that. So she's busy.
There was a conflict here. So briefly, Valerie Larson is very well-known in the state and in the American Indian community. Her late husband started working here for, with us, but they always kind of came as a pair. And so when he unfortunately sadly passed, we kept Val on. And she took over the role as our American Indian Specialist. So she meets with all of our students, K through 12. And she, for example, she advises, for example, yesterday in this room, she was working with elementary teachers on curriculum. So she advises in that way. And she, you know, is our district connection to the parent committee and helps to plan and organize all of the activities. So there's, we have an academic component during the day. And then weekends and evenings, there are cultural and family components as well. She's outstanding and amazing.
She was actually in one of the pictures that was on there, on the slide earlier.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good questions. Any other question, Laura?
Oh, I just want to thank you for your involvement and especially for the incredible amount of dedication that the parent committee has. Because, you know, there is, there is a component of compliance with the law. And I don't want to just be following it to the letter of the law. I want to follow it to the heart of what it's trying to accomplish. And, and your work has embodied that. So, I mean, just the, the, I cannot tell you how proud I am of this program here. And just, let's just make sure that we're supporting you in the ways that you need to be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure to bring that back to the group.
Yeah, very grateful.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Laura. Thanks for coming. Thank you, Superintendent Stenvik. Next, we have our council member, Justice Briggs, to give us a City of Columbia Heights update. Welcome, Justice.
Thank you for having me. I know you guys are very busy, but thank you for making time for me. I think I'll just jump in. There's a lot of exciting things going on in the city. I think one of the highlights that, one of the highlights of the city has been our Youth Commission, which is a great success. Mayor Marquez Simula is the liaison for that. And I just wanted to point out that the applications for the upcoming school year will open sometime in March. We don't have a specific date yet, but if students are interested in that, that's something they can apply for coming up this next month. And we had a wonderful member of the Youth Commission accept our International Women's Day proclamation last night at our city council meeting. So it's exciting to see them at one of our meetings. And then, starting in September, they will be able to meet at our new city hall, which is hopefully going to be completed in June. So that will be really exciting for them to be able to get there, too. The next thing, I think, is that our spring city newsletter is going out now. I got mine today in the mail and they should be coming out to everyone soon. And that highlights our programs, trips, and athletics available through our Parks and Rec Department for the spring and summer. Hopefully, we get a lot of involvement there. And then it also includes many other city updates. And I think one of the ones that not a ton of people know is about our Citizen of the Year nominations. There's actually an adult and a youth component. So youth can be nominated, I believe that is through April 24th for that. And we had, we didn't have one last year, but two years ago, we recognized one of our, I think it was a senior student. So that was awesome to see. Pertinent to the school, the city continues to work with MINDOT about improving the safety of Central Avenue. Obviously, it's very close to the school and we have a lot of students who end up walking or commuting through that. And that's one of our big priorities, is to increase the safety for all of our pedestrians, but especially our students there. And then of note, the city recently got a grant to hire an independent planner who's going to come and evaluate all our city's streets and sidewalks and whatnot and give us safety recommendations. So hopefully, that happens during this year and that'll be a great thing for everyone here, especially our students. Other things of note, we have current plans to redevelop two of our main streets, 37th and 53rd Avenue. So basically, our north and south borders there, having some exciting updates there to improve the safety, walkability, drivability of those. And then, let's see, that's all I have for that. I'm also the library board liaison. I thought that was a nice fit with the school board as well. So I've been working with them for a couple of months now. Something that was brought up at the last library board meeting was that they are discussing eliminating room fees for the community room. That's been a discussion point of theirs for a couple of years now. And they're bringing that back up. And that'll come before the city council in the next couple of months. And I think they're looking to eliminate that to make it a more equitable and accessible space for all of our residents, especially the parents of our students who may want to have a meeting or some kind of event there. And then I've also talked to our library director, Renee Doherty, about ways we can help our students. And one of the things that we talked over email about was the current use of Libby Overdrive, the e-learning platform that some of the students have access to. And they can access each appropriate eBooks, e-magazines, and e-audiobooks that are already purchased by the library. And there are also other resources available for learning and help for school things, to my understanding. And also of note, since we have a very multicultural school, it's available in many different languages. So that's a nice thing as well. And I think one thing the library would like to do is to see how we can expand the use and access to that and see if that's hypothetically something, maybe we can get on more of the Chromebooks for the students so it's preloaded and something that can be ready for them to use at the beginning of the school year, possibly next year in the future. And then also just looking for any ways the city and the library can be supportive of our students. So if there's any questions or ideas from any of you, we'd love to hear that. Couple last things. The city is partnering with Valley View for an Arbor Day tree planting ceremony on April 28th at McKenna Park over the lunch hour. So I think that'll be really exciting to get with some of our elementary students and plant a tree. And then I think last, I've heard a rumor that you have an all-star, rock star of a district nurse in Columbia Heights. For those who don't know, she's my wife, so I think she does a good job. But that's all I have. If there's any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer them.
That's fabulous. Any questions for Councilmember Briggs? Mary.
Hi, welcome. I'm so glad you're here.
Thank you.
One question, and I don't expect you to maybe have this answer right away, but one thing, you said that there was a grant that was received to study the roads and those patterns. Because Hilltop is fully enclosed within Columbia Heights, there's some complications sometimes with that over who gets to do what. But some of, like 49th, so we have two out of our five, well, four out of our five schools are on 49th, but two of those are also technically in Hilltop. So do you know if those streets within Hilltop will also be included in that?
That is a great question. I don't know, but I will ask. I'll write that down and ask our Public Works Director, Kevin Hanson, about that because that's a great point, that technically those aren't Columbia Heights roads, but are obviously of importance to us. So I'm sure they'll be included since 49th is mostly in Columbia Heights, but we'll double-check with them, especially if there's any recommendations they have for that.
Yeah. I mean, and there's also all the other complications with 49th, with say, county also has to be involved. It's a, it's a thing. But just thinking about how anybody who has had to do drop-off at the middle school over the last few, it's gotten, I mean, it's really busy, it was busy. It's always, and it was really busy at Highland today, too. So just those sorts of questions. So I'll be interested to hear what comes of that.
Absolutely, yeah. I'll ask and if, once I get an answer, I will let you all know about that.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions for Councilmember Briggs?
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome. And we're looking forward to seeing more of you. So thank you very much for your time today. I know you've got a busy meeting schedule as well. So we do appreciate you coming and taking the time for our meeting.
Absolutely, yeah. I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nothing else, we'll see you on the 7th.
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you. Next, we have our Achievement and Integration Plan and Budget with Executive Director Niemwey.
Dr. Stunkel and I were debating on seeing if I was going to get it up or if she was going to go first, so I passed the test. Chair Mueller, Superintendent Stenvik, and members of the board. I am here tonight to present the Achievement and Integration Budget and Plan. If you remember, last year when I came, I only presented on the budget. And so we have a process that every three years, we rewrite our Achievement and Integration Plan. And so tonight, I'll be combining both. Our mission in Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. So all our core values will be represented tonight in my presentation. And this is a governance presentation, information session today. And I will be back on March 14th to, for an action item to ask you to approve the plan. So similar to the earlier presentation from the American Indian, this is a program that is governed by Statute 124D.861. And it's one that really accentuate the value of both academic achievement and racial integration. And so our Achievement Plan, Achievement Integration Plan, is a three-year plan. So we just completed the 2020, 2023. And if you recall, some of our World Best Workforce presentation, we gave a report on Achievement Integration. And we actually met all our goals for Achievement and Integration. So we're excited that some of the work that we're, the work that we're doing is yielding results for our children and our teachers. So part of the three-year plan has this three-year cycle where I will keep coming back and asking you to approve the budget for the next three years. And the Achievement Integration Plan that we have has three goals. Number one, reducing disparities in academic achievement. Number two, reducing disparities in equitable access to effective and more diverse teachers. So we do a lot of good work of professional development, which I will speak in a little bit later. And then the third goal is increasing that racial and economic integration. And our partner is St. Anthony New Brighton School District. So as far as the budget, it's weird because I'm looking at my screen and I have this black line right on, so that's why I keep turning my eyes there. So I'm going to look over there. So our three-year plan for Achievement and Integration comes with some strict requirement So our three-year plan for achievement and integration comes with some strict requirement that the plan drives the budget. But that budget that is provided to us has a lot of value placed on direct student programming. And at least 80% of the funding that we receive should go to that section. But they also allow us as a school district to use up to 20% in professional development and then no more than 10% in administrative cost. And the reason for all this, it's because the school district already receives money from the state to run. And this is additional funding to do innovative things that are surrounding the work of academic achievement and integration. And so last year, our professional development was actually less than 10%. And our administrative cost was right at 9.9 something. So we do a good job making sure that all this money goes back to service our students. And so part of the allowable strategies and intervention that will lead the achievement integration plan and the goals that I, I read earlier is to innovate and integrate the pre-K-12 learning environment. So what else are we doing in addition to? And then it's to provide professional development focusing on achievement for all students, not just some students. And then we, as you've heard in previous presentation here at the board, we have a lot of focus on college and career readiness. And that plays out into the rigorous coursework that you hear about at Columbia Heights High School. And then finally, there is a component of recruitment and retention for racially and ethnically diverse teachers. As we celebrated Mr. Ted tonight, it's one of those great things that we've done in our district. And his nomination, as a matter of fact, came from Black Men Teach, the other organization that we're partnering with to increase the number of teachers of color in our school district. So this great partnership that we started is yielding results in many ways. And so there is a timeline that comes with the achievement integration budget. So in the fall, as you recall, we presented the World Best Workforce and talked about the meetings that we've been having within the district. And then in February, we bring the, the budget to the board. And then on March 15th, it is due to the Department of Education. So this year, we have both the budget and the plan that are due. And then in December, we start working on the actual expenditures. And by December 15th, we report to MDE what we spend. And that same timeline follows for next year, which you'll see me back again. So as far as the plan, the development process of the plan is, it includes that we annually review the data, as I spoke about, and we're pleased that we met our achievement and integration goals. And then there is also a joint meeting. So for this year's planning, achievement and integration plan, we've been meeting with St. Anthony New Brighton, their Director of Teaching and Learning and one of their other staff to talk about the goals that we are jointly agreeing to partner for the next three years. And then internally, you just heard about the American Indian presentation. So those students are not excluded from the work that we do in achievement integration because they're part of our school district. They're all included. And then we collected feedback from the World Best Workforce Committee, who had some suggestion about what we should do with the money that we receive and professional development for teachers that is needed. And then, as you know, each of our school district has a district equity team and after their professional development, they're always offering input and feedback as to what we do and how we move forward. And of course, without our, without our administrators, we can't do the work that we do, so we collect feedback from them as well. So there is an alignment that has to happen with achievement and integration to the World Best Workforce Report. And by now, I'm sure you've become an expert on the World Best Workforce Report because you've heard that word so many times. And so I won't bore you, but all I have to say is we go from kindergarten readiness to success in high school with graduation. So and everything in between plays a part. And the achievement integration plan and funding does contribute to the work that teachers are doing to ensure that all our students graduate successfully from Columbia Heights High School. And so how much money do we get? So the achievement integration funding is broken in two parts. You have the achievement integration money and then you have the incentive revenue. So in total, this year, we have about $1,063,732. I'm sad to inform you that it's $30,000 less than what we received last year. If you ask me why, I don't know how the calculations came about. So there is something about the formula. But at least we still get $1 million to spend on some of the items that I'm going to share now. So goal one, increasing access and opportunity to academic programming that will prepare students to be college and career ready and reduce disparities in academic achievement. And we do that by ensuring that there is a diverse pool of students that are successfully participating in the AVID program. And I'll speak briefly about AVID shortly here. Another one is making sure that our academic growth benchmark on the assessment that we take are focusing on reading, math skills, so that we're ensuring that our students are growing. Our second goal is to provide equitable access to culturally relevant instruction to professional development, and this is for teachers. So we measure that by looking at the climate survey, participation cultural, relevant professional development. And then you've probably heard Superintendent Stanwick talk about walk and talk, but that Erin and I do every month for all our five schools. But our administrators conduct walkthroughs and observe classrooms to be able to see the impact that teachers have on our students and learning. And our third goal is that partnership between St. Anthony New Brighton and Columbia Public Schools. And through that partnership, we've been doing for the past years is offering summer seminar for writing and for math. And so in this new three-year plan, we're also proposing to have a year-long journal writing. And we're going to use some of our AVID students who participate with the St. Anthony New Brighton students who are going into seventh grade. And the goal there is to increase the participation of students who come to summer seminar because we've seen that there's been a little decline in the participation. And so that's the way we'll partner with St. Anthony New Brighton. And one of Superintendent Stanwick's most desired component is seeing students being engaged into decision-making. So in the next three years, you'll be invited to sit and listen to St. Anthony New Brighton students and Columbia Heights students presenting about a capstone project that we're going to learn about from St. Anthony, that they're going to present to Columbia Heights. If all goes well, they'll make a recommendation to adopt the capstone project for eighth-grade students. And then there will be more presentation to parents and to the community. So we're very excited to elevate student voice through this integration partnership. And so AVID, Advanced via Individual Determination, is one of the programs that we support from all grade, grade K through 12. The funds that we, we receive, we pay for some training, we pay for membership. I am happy to report to you that over the years, we've maintained high enrollment in the AVID program. And when I compare last year's number to this year's number, the numbers are still up. I think the number, if I don't make any mistakes, about 478. But more importantly, you know, your familiarity with AVID, these are students who are in the middle, that are prepared to take advanced courses. And so what was exciting when I first started working in Columbia Heights, that Superintendent Stanwick shared with me, is that they applied for a large sum of money. So the data that Emily Gardner shared with me was that last year's seniors applied for about 2.4 million. And so that's a total of about 350 applications. So this speaks highly to the work that students do after they are well-engaged in the classroom and what they're able to do with their life beyond that. So that's a lot of money. I don't know how much of that we receive, but they attempted for that much money. And then we have the early college, which is early continuing enrollment courses to allow high school students to earn high school and college credit simultaneously. So we have our juniors who take those courses and you've heard about our AP offerings that we have at the high school. And this year, we're also planning to add the modern classroom project, which, I know there is a future presentation on the modern classroom project that you'll hear and you'll be wowed by the work that our teachers are doing using that approach. And then we also do innovative and integrated learning environment during the summer. And last summer, you've probably heard with all the funding that the federal government provided, there were lots of field trips that were associated with summer school learning. And so we are continuing to provide that even for those who are doing the summer writing and the math seminar. And then parent engagement, of which I think you've heard a lot about, the work that is happening in our district, some of these funds go and support the, the work that we do to engage parents in different levels. And I think I had shared with you guys that we're planning to do mental health sessions with the reach program. We've done the first session, there's a second session coming up, and I'll be able to send the dates for those of you who are interested. And that's in partnership with other community-based organizations. And as far as professional development is concerned, we focus on culturally relevant and equitable practices. And so we use the money to pay consultants who come into schools to help us. But we also do some book readings and sharing and we borrow some of those practices and implement them in the classroom. And finally, the summer seminar partnership with St. Anthony, where we do the writing course and the algebra course. In the past, there was some coding and games and some outdoors field trip. And so we truly believe that allowing students to go and explore the outdoors or other places connects the learning to make it meaningful. And so in summary, there is a budget, there are strategies and there are goals. And this funding is restricted in the way it is used to ensure that we are not supplanting, but we are supporting by enriching funds that already exist in the district. And at this point, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Executive Director Namway. Any questions? There's a lot of information, so it might be that we'll need to let that soak in. Julie?
I do have a question. I was looking at goal one, and I'm just confused by some terminology. It says to increase access and opportunity to academic programming that will prepare students to be college and career ready. Is access and opportunity unavailable to some students in the school? They don't have access to certain classes? Is it, could you explain that a little more clearly?
Yeah, so in every school, you have students who come from different walks of life. You have students who come in already, reading on grade level, and you have some who come reading below grade level. And then you have students who are ready and take advanced placement courses. And you have some students who go to high school, not able to take advanced placement classes. So the AVID program, AVID, Advanced via Individual Determination, is one of the programs that integration revenue funding supports. So these are students who may not be ready, but by participating in these programs, they're able to become ready and eventually take those advanced classes and go on to college. So that's an example of providing access and opportunity to compete at the same level as those who may have come already.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent question. Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Mary?
I just want to call out, so specifically about AVID, one thing, I'm really grateful for the update on it. One thing I don't think very many people know or realize is that AVID usually was a, like a high school program, but we were one of the first school districts in the, I feel like it was the United States?
I can say that when we started elementary, those of us who went through the first training were the third cohort in the nation.
Yeah. So to bring it into the elementary level. And so I remember when that, when they came in and they toured it. And, and it's so exciting to see just how much it has continued to grow and to provide really well, like fantastic support for our students and the fact that we were, again, like some of the first people that piloted it. I think people came in on a bus from Texas to tour Valley View and just to see how far it's gone and how our scholars are doing and, and how our staff are supporting students. And it's really fantastic now that those kids are getting into the high school that were in the elementary at that time, to see those things paying, like they're paying off. So I'm really glad that you've highlighted that and thank you so much for your work on it, on all of this.
You're welcome. The credit goes to teaching and learning and Emily Gardner, who supports the teacher and goes to training. So I'll make sure I pass the word to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Jessica?
Thank you very much for the presentation. I would add, when it comes to AVID as a parent of elementary schoolers, I'm very thankful for the focus on organization. In my house, that's very important. I did just have a question, maybe you can clarify, just a point of confusion for me that, so the goals stated at the beginning of the presentation are different than the goals that are more specifically what laid out? Is that because those first goals are sort of the broader goals of the achievement and integration budget? And those, the following goals are like our district-specific goals for this plan?
You are correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So when you read the statute, that's how you should spend your plan developing, but that's to be specific to your school. And so, yeah, when you see the change in there, it's because that's what we're choosing to spend our money to.
Thank you. So the big goals, one, two and three, those come from statute.
The broad goals.
Our goals, one, two and three are for the plan starting in 2024.
You are correct.
Great, thank you. And then I, I also did a question because I know you talked about, you know, access to culturally relevant instruction through a few different avenues, one of those being professional development. Part of that overarching strategy and intervention is also around recruitment and retention of diverse teachers. And I know there's lots of ways that the district is, is working on that. But is there anything specific in this plan to address that, that piece of?
The recruitment and the retention?
Yes.
So one of the best ways to keep your teachers is to give them quality professional development. And so there are some districts who will spend money doing, going to out of state and find teachers of color. We've taken that money to focus on professional development for our teachers. And so as we train them in good strategies and they teach children and they feel supported, they're able to stay in our district.
Thank you. And then that also leads me to my last question, I promise, which is just about, about that professional development and, you know, you really emphasizing the importance of that. What kind of input do our teachers and staff in the district have into what that professional development looks like?
So our teaching and learning department leads all the professional development. So after the four professional development session that we offer in the district, they offer surveys to give feedback about the quality of the professional development, the quality of the content, the quality of the presentation, and what else would you want more of? And so that's one way they give feedback. But you also have teachers who participate in the World Best Workforce Committee, and those teachers also offer feedback on professional development that would like more of this. And what about if we can add X, Y and Z? And when will we do X, Y and Z? But then the teaching and learning department, who guides all the professional development in the district, also look at our priorities. So right now, our priority is literacy. And so a lot of the professional development we've been conducting have been supporting literacy and equity.
Great. Thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
I'm done, I promise.
Excellent questions. Any other questions? So Director, Executive Director Namway will be back at our March 14th movie, uh, movie. We're having a movie now.
Yeah.
Our March 14th meeting to ask for approval of that plan and then the budget along with that. So it, the PowerPoint is in Board Book if you need to go back and take a look at that, too. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And next, we will invite Director Stankel up to talk about mini adventure and adventure club themes.
Looks like PowerPoint is hidden. Thank you, Dr. Namway. We have a joke where we call each other doctor. If you're wondering like, when did?
Chair Mueller, members of the board, Superintendent Stanvik. I'm here this evening to present about the Adventure Club and Mini Adventure fee increase. Our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. This evening, the core values of community, collaboration, and integrity will be focused on, of course, aligned with our equity statement, with the school board equity statement. As we spoke earlier, Mini Adventures and Adventure Club are our two childcare programs. They have to be self-sustaining in their costs. So they are fee-based programs, and the fees must cover the cost of the program. So as every year, I come to you because our costs increase every year. So this year, just like in previous years, I'm coming with the suggestion that we increase our fees by two percent. When we set this, I meet with Director Hennekenz to talk about not only what are our costs for the program, but we also always look at what are comparable programs in neighboring districts so that we make sure that our fees are comparable to them. Sometimes, like in the case of our situation, our hours are longer for Adventure Club and for Mini Adventures. Our school day ends earlier, so Adventure Club is a longer period of time. So if you say, oh, well, I looked at this other district and their fees are X, you always want to look at how many hours are they with the students and programs like that. So with Mini Adventures, you'll see it's approximately a two percent increase. And so it would go, for example, if a student is enrolled five days a week, it would go from three hundred and two dollars to three hundred and eight dollars a week as an increase. And then with Adventure Club, also a two percent increase. So you say that there's both the daily after-school rate, there's also the school release day. We are open from six-thirty in the morning until six on non-school days, and then also during the summer. The fees include the meals and snacks for the students, field trips. We do curriculum and programming supervised by a licensed teacher. That is Jody Gadian, who oversees the Adventure Club. And we now have a new early childhood coordinator, Kari Sawyer. They both have teaching licenses, they oversee these programs. Our Mini Adventures program is four-star parent-aware rated. And that's only for early childhood programs, otherwise I'm sure Adventure Club would rate that also. And then also, both programs are DHS certified. So these are fee-based programs. Parents do have access to scholarships through CCAP, that's a county, and also through Pathways One and Pathways Two. This is a governance question for you because it is about fees, and it will be coming as an action item at your next board meeting. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Director Stunkel. I think one comment, just I know you had said this, but to reiterate for the board and people listening at home, this is a self-sustaining program. So the only funds that this program has to operate are the funds collected from fees. So it's not like we can go out and, you know, take money from the general fund or move money around or, you know, buildings and grounds or whatnot. So it is a fully sustainable fee-based program. So any questions for Director Stunkel?
I have a question. Is the curriculum reviewed like all the curriculum in the school? So it goes through a parent review and all of that as well?
It is not an education program per se, so it's not part of, for example, the World's Best Workforce. Many of the students are duly enrolled. So they might go over to the pre-K-three program for a bit or to the pre-K-four program and then come back to Mini Adventures, for example. But it is aligned to what's happening in the threes and fours program. So it's not the same as going to a threes or a fours classroom, but they draw on that curriculum as a childcare program. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
All right, Director Stunkel, we will have this on our next meeting. It will be an action item. Thank you. Next, we have our policy first reading. So our policies are two, zero-three dot two, Order of Regular School Board Meetings, six-oh-three, Curriculum Development, six-oh-four, Instructional Curriculum, six-thirteen, Graduation Requirements, seven-oh-nine, Student Transportation Safety Policy. These will appear on a future agenda for approval. They are currently available on the website for our community members or board members to review and provide comment to Superintendent Stanvik. Next, we will move on to board topics. Does anybody have any board topics? I have two.
Ooh!
I know. First, this Friday, March third at seven PM at the high school, is the annual Performing Arts Night. So this involves students both visual and performance arts, really across the district. So I think they even have some of the fifth-grade band students sometimes come. But it is a great night of, and there's an art show. It's part of the Sister Cities Art Show as well that evening. And then there's choir, band performances, oftentimes theater. So really a great night, seven PM in the PAC this Friday. Also, the other board topic I wanted to talk about was just our kind of board structure and meetings. Just a reminder, I know Superintendent Stanvik has been including some of our 200 series in our packets. For our board meetings, to make sure that they are run smoothly and kept in order, we do have in our board policy that if you want to talk or ask questions, that you raise your hand, be acknowledged by the chair before speaking. You can do that by raising your hand, kind of motioning to me so I know that you want to speak. There's also on your board book, you can raise your hand digitally as well. So before you speak and ask questions, if you can just wait to be recognized by the chair that it's your turn to speak, that'll help our meetings run as smooth as possible. If you have any questions on that, you can also let me know. The other, oh, I have three. The other item is just be prepared for our March work session. We have two chapters in our book, Street Data, that we're reading since we did our board retreat in February. So be prepared for those next two chapters, February's chapter and March's chapter for our March work session. Those are my board topics. Anybody else have any board topics?
Jessica, I forgot. I just forgot to mention that it's National Public Schools Week this week. So Happy Public Schools Week. And thanks to everyone in our district who helps make our district public schools great.
Excellent. Thank you. Laura?
It's also Career and Tech Month, you know, which was great because we got to see the career and tech down at the high school and see the automotive room, the woodworking room, you know, and, you know, learning that our kids are learning how to weld. Those are good jobs, you know? Those are really good jobs. So maybe we can have our students make sure that we keep moving. So, you know, moving forward, fixing cars and making sure that buildings are structurally sound and everything. Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Laura. Any other? I know, right? All right, well, without further ado then, we will adjourn the meeting at eight nineteen.